And I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Shatsbury-Yellington School Board to order. Let's get organized here. Get my other stuff put away. Do we have any citizens' comments out there today? Hearing none, we will go on to the superintendent's report. Laura?
Hi. Glad I'm here tonight. I thought since I was here tonight that I would give you an educational update around literacy and an investment that you all participated in, money that was spent at the district level but to support our schools around literacy. And that's in regards to Reading Street as a primary resource for K through 2. So, as a reminder, in May 2017, we presented a literacy needs assessment to the SBSU Board, which was a year's worth of work under the guidance of the Hill for Literacy, and it evaluated our whole literacy system. And one of the findings was that we didn't have a consistent reading program. And so, our ELA Committee, which has representation from all the schools, so you have teachers that sit on, from Shatsbury, that sit on all the curriculum teams, and they reviewed evidence-based programs and landed on Reading Street. Currently, we are able to fund it for K through 2. And we're using it to focus on comprehension for literary and informational text, and also for vocabulary. And we use it alongside foundations. The, we provided training for teachers in the spring of last year with a Reading Street trainer, and they came in, and then they came back this fall and provided a follow-up training with questions. Part of the purchase was an intervention kit. So, this morning, we actually met with Mary Carr, who's here, and we talked about the, it's called sidewalks as an intervention. So, when we have kids that are struggling, we also have a resource that can provide that support as well. And the, Reading Street is great about, then again, providing that trainer that can come in and support that piece. We also had the pleasure, Jim and I had the pleasure, Jim Colkeen and I had the pleasure of coming back. Jeff invited us to come in and do a walk-through about three weeks ago. And we were focusing on literacy, because that is a district-level goal, as well as most of our schools as well. And we started the day with a collaboration meeting, which is just really wonderful to see classroom teachers and the interventionist, and the sped teacher, and the math teacher having time, because Jeff has done a great job of creating a master schedule that allows for those really good conversations to happen, so that next steps can be planned for an instruction. We then got to visually walk through K through 2, and we were able to see the foundations and reading materials present, and kids using materials. Again, I want to, Shatsbury's done such a great job of making sure that kids have access to technology, because part of the components of, in particular, Reading Street is a digital platform. So, I could, we could watch kids, sit down with kids, and Betsy Madison, the second-grade teacher, did a really nice job of sharing how she can assign activities to kids that can also be used at home with parents and families. So, it was just, I wanted to share with you a little about, a little bit about that investment that we've made as a district but is impacting all of our, all of our schools. So, with me being here tonight, I thought I should give you some, a little educational update.
Thank you.
What else? Sub rates? Sub rates, thank you. Got one more. So, did anyone not get the sub-rate proposal? Here it is. Coming your way. So, just prior to this meeting, in the, in the budget meeting, Renee Gordon reviewed in the budget, and we're hoping to actually start this. Have you approved this proposal tonight? We have had to relook at our sub, current sub-rate, because we're having difficulty securing subs to cover when teachers or any staff are out of the building. Recently, our neighboring districts, our Human Resource Department, did some research. And two of the districts close to us, which would be Huzick Falls and the CDC, have recently increased their rate. So, subs that have typically helped us in the past have actually been very vocal about telling us that if there's more money, we're, we're going to go somewhere else. So, we, we, and after further research, HR could trail this all the way back to the last time there was an increase was 2000, before, possibly before 2008. So, it's time. We, the, the other piece would be that the actual amount spent on substitutes during the course of the year is typically less than 35% of what's actually budgeted. And currently, as you heard before, this proposal's already been around to, and approved by the SBSU, the BSD, the panel, and the Woodford Boards. So, you are the next in line.
I make a motion, we approve it?
We have a motion to approve the substitute rate proposal that's been passed out. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Any no discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried.
Thank you.
Is that effect, when's that effective?
Jerry.
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 Okay. On to the treasures report. Anybody have any questions on the treasures report?
Yeah.
That's what, that's what I was gonna add. Jeff?
Yes?
They have a receipt from Nature's Classroom for $250.
A receipt or a?
It was a, yeah, it's money coming in.
Oh, that was a donation from the senior class of this year. They donated to all the, all the other schools to go to nature class. I'm sorry about that. I forgot to mention that. Yep, the senior class of this year donated $250.
Yeah, that's what we had at that last meeting. I just didn't click. Thank you.
Yep.
Let's see. We should have a motion to accept the treasures report?
Make a motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Okay, budget status report and budget transfer request. Let's do the budget status report. Anybody have any questions on that?
Nope.
No questions? Okay. We'll accept that. And budget transfer request? Jeff has a?
Yeah, so as, as you know, our capital improvements line has been depleted a little bit because of some missed invoice stuff from the summer. So, we'd like to, what we'd like to do is, we have the new water fountain. It's been a couple of years now out in the lobby with, it's a bigger water fountain. It fills water bottles. It's very popular, especially at the end of recess time. What we noticed is very congested. Kids really want to use that water fountain. So, we have two existing water fountains on this end that are the old, the old water fountains. We'd like to add the new style in on this end of the building for the 6th grade and 5th grade, and the 4th grade and 5th grade on this side. So that, we, I'm asking for some money from the reserve fund to purchase those water fountains and install those water fountains.
And that would be just for the kids to use when they come in from any time?
Well, they use it anytime. But, yeah, recess is a busy time when everybody's coming in to get water, and it's, they're, they all want to fill their water bottles here, obviously, because you can do it, and it's just, it'd be nice to have some fresh water.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yep.
So therefore, we gotta have a motion to transfer that.
Make a motion to transfer.
We have a motion to transfer the budget? Second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Kip fund request. Kip fund request.
Yep. So, I have, I was late getting quotes for this, so that's why I'm bringing this to, to you now. So, as you know, we spent some KIP money last year on getting some Promethean boards, which is basically what, not basically, it's what you're looking at there, just its larger version. We, we put some in some classrooms, and they've been very successful replacing some old, some old smart boards that are way outdated, and they're just, the bulbs are going, the detectors are going. The Promethean boards are much nicer, as you see from Renee's presentation. Some of the things they can do, they're basically computers on the wall that, that teachers are using. So, what we'd like to do, I've been talking to Chris Roef, our technician, and he's been suggesting some areas where we could improve on some Promethean boards in some other classrooms. So, what I'm asking for here is some money from the KIP fund again to get six Promethean boards and the related software and accessories we needed to run them in the classroom. It's roughly $17,435.42, but I'm still not sure what the shipping's gonna be. Yeah, I couldn't get that quote. That could be a little less, a little more, depending on what the shipping is for that.
Okay. And we can put them in ourselves, right?
Oh, yeah, we, we've installed all of them up to this point. Yep, yep. Chris and Jay have done a good job of doing that.
Okay.
And we have, I think we have $49,000 in the KIP fund currently.
So, we need a motion to transfer from the KIP fund for these smart boards.
Promethean boards.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any other discussion?
In what amount?
$17,000.
$18,000.
I've asked for up to $18,000.
I'd make a motion for up to $18,000.
Yeah, up to 18, right?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Consent agenda?
Just a note that there was one warrant in front of you that didn't make it into the packet, which is part of the consent agenda.
That's for?
Water bill came in after we had already run it, and a bill from John Penny.
So, that's in addition to? Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? And I need a motion to accept it? So moved? We have a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay. Next, we go to policies, $5,600.
Basically, on this one, $5,600, student freedom of expression, school-sponsored media. As you can see in here, what we decided to do, what we're throwing out there is that we have the policy statement, and then you click on that link, and it'll bring you to the administrative regs, if anybody wanted to look at what it all meant, I guess.
Okay.
I haven't clicked on that link myself, but it's the administrative reg.
Yep.
Define the policy.
So, we want to warn that one?
All right, move we warn, policy $5,600.
$5,600. Do I have a second to that? Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have to adopt $7,100, which is board member education.
Right. Believe it or not, the change in this one is, as we talked about in the last meeting, we strike, struck, in line 10, we struck out Will, put Can. Well, we realized there was another one of those in line 13, so we have to strike out Will, put Can again. So, we had to send it around.
Poor Will got struck twice.
Well, yeah, he got struck twice, and Can's in there now.
Okay. All those in favor of that big change? Oh, do I, I gotta have a motion first?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it. To adopt.
To adopt.
To adopt.
Any other discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Okay, personnel. Now, we, Jeff hasn't been here for a couple of months, and I'm kind of concerned about if we get to January and Dave's got another job now, so that he may not be here for all meetings. And if somebody saw us as sick or something like that, we won't have enough for a quorum. So, I'd like to put it in the hopper to get a replacement for Jeff Leek's spot, since he's retired. And we'll have to open it up. I think that's what you, you have to open up the?
So, we'll have to, um, yeah, you guys, in this public meeting, you can say it's an open position. We can post it anywhere. We post anything else for Shatsbury on the website and everything else. Post it for up to two weeks, or at least two weeks. And then, you guys have the prerogative to interview, interviewing and appoint anybody that puts their name in the hat for that position. The person who does accept that position will still have to run in March, if they want to keep that position past March. One, because it's, it's a temporary fill. Two, because Jeff's position was up at that time, anyway.
No, Jeff wasn't up at that time.
Well, I heard that it was, but?
No.
I saw the list somewhere, but?
Jeff, Jeff, Jeff was, see, that was a problem they had back then. They put Jeff?
In the wrong.
In the wrong slot.
Okay.
And they had me in, because I only ran for the two, and Jeff ran for the three.
Okay.
I ran for the two.
And you ran for the two.
I thought it was you two that were up, right?
It's Scott and I that are up.
But I think still because of wherever you appoint, I think because it's filling a temporary position that somebody left, I think they still need to run in March. But could you check on that for sure, now that we know that Jeff's not?
And we don't have alternates, right?
No.
No.
I wasn't sure.
No. So, we'll put that out to the?
So, do, one of us needs to make a motion right now to advertise an open position?
Yeah, let's make that an action item.
Yeah, we have to accept it. We're gonna accept?
So, I'd like to make a motion to advertise for up to two weeks the open position vacated by Jeff Leek for the board to fill as an appointee.
Second. Any other discussion?
How, how do we advertise it typically?
Just we need to contact Karen, Kat, Tony, contact the superintendent's office.
What, does she put an ad in the paper?
They're gonna have to warn it.
I understand if we warn it, anyplace else, we warn any other Shatsbury business.
Oh, okay.
All the exact.
Yeah.
Which is not necessarily that we're paying for a space app, but?
No.
I believe you guys could then appoint somebody in the January meeting.
And then, we can appoint somebody to January meeting, which would be good till March?
Would be good till March.
And then, they have to run again.
And then, they'll have to run again.
Would they have to, oh, they would have to run again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna check on that.
Even though Jeff is?
I wrote that down.
We're gonna check on that, because Jeff wasn't up, so?
Yeah, because it'll only be for?
I think it'd serve the rest of that term.
They would.
So, they may not have to run then, if he's not up?
He may not. I didn't think he had to.
That's my, that was my original thought, that I had to talk with the superintendent. He must have a different list, because he had Jeff as 2019. So, we'll check into that.
Initially, it came out that Jeff and I were switched when we ran, but that wasn't true.
Okay.
And it's Scott and myself who are up this year. And then, basically, the, the, it'll be only from, what is it, March until end of June?
Well, Renee's mentioned it might go to the summer, correct, Renee? For some business?
We will have some lingering?
Yeah, lingering things, lingering board action, but usually, it's just the officers that can take care of that.
Yeah, it'll be minimal.
Yeah. Because that's what I had. Okay, so we have a, so you're, you're, all we have to do is just?
I'll find out.
Post it. Okay. Do we have to?
No, we didn't have a second yet.
We haven't voted yet.
And you didn't get a second, Scott.
Scott made the motion.
You said?
For Tony seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Exhaust hood system. Okay, we have a statement here from John Penny. And our hood system isn't doing well?
It's not running at all, though.
That's not doing well.
It's not doing well.
That's a good way to get a new one. Break it.
We're probably gonna work on it over Christmas break and try to do something with it, but?
But it was, yeah, it was, John Penny told us about what, last time that he came in, he asked us about if he wanted to fund the kitchen exhaust fan. And we just listened at that time, but now we, it seems like we have to. Because we, I think we got the money in the, we have money in the?
Reserve fund.
Reserve fund. We got money in the reserve fund. Yes, we do have enough money in the reserve fund to take care of it.
Do we have to send that out the bid?
Yes. Probably. If, if, we gotta discuss which one, because John gave us a couple of options. And which option did you want to use?
When you bid, this section of ventilation, have it all done at the same time? Is that the plan for next summer?
Do you think it'll last the next summer?
Well, I'm gonna try to work on over Christmas break and see if we can just do something to keep it going for a couple more months, but?
Well, why don't we, why don't we put out a separate thing that? I'd rather have it worked on.
We need it working.
Yeah.
Because you can, you can say you'll try to get it ready, but what happens if you don't? Should we put a question mark in there? If he doesn't get?
Because we worked on it a lot.
Right. That's what I'm saying. You'll get your brother in there. He'll fix it.
He'll replace everything.
He'll get in the motor and do something.
So, I think, I think John Penny, last time, gave us a couple of choices, which ones we wanted to do. And I think we agreed, I was, at least I was, I thought about it, that not the Cadillac of replacing everything, but doing the upgrade that he gave us. Did he give us two choices?
In the letter here, he gives us a couple of different options.
Oh, yeah.
Tot, high-end totaling in the $120,000 range.
Yeah.
That's for both systems.
For both.
Yeah. Including multi?
But the hood is 40 to 60 itself.
So, over the, I mean, does, I'm not sure exactly what, what's not working right now, Jay, but has that happened before, and have we fixed it? Or is it a different kind of breakdown?
There's two exhaust fans, the, for the hoods, and the brackets are all worn, and they're just, there's nothing there to secure anything anymore. They're just, and the motors are so rotted, it, everything's 45 years old out there.
And the hoods are on the roof, so they're out?
The hoods?
Or, sorry, the?
The motors are mounted on the outside wall.
The fans are, okay.
Yeah.
So, they're able to, or they're able to prepare food on the stove without, without it running?
Well, we got some alternate fans that are running in and out to try to move heat around, because it's?
It's hot, yeah.
Even this time of year.
Yeah, I, you know, my own thought was, is it just, if you're gonna go ahead and do it, you know? If we can get the motion going, rather than come back in January and, as you can't, I can't fix it, then we have to start all over again.
This is for the hood, or this is for the?
And you may be able to get somebody to fix it before, back while, while they're on Christmas break. Well, I don't know about that either. Yeah.
So, is anybody, does anybody have a recommendation based on what John sent us? Are you recommending that we do anything, or are we, we're here to make that?
I recommend we do something.
Thank you.
Sounds like we need to.
Um, I, I, just, um?
You got three options.
I mean, I, I know we've talked about, that's kind of our phase three, is the multipurpose room of this whole ventilation project.
Yeah.
If that's something the board wants to entertain, you know, doing that as well, if we're gonna be in there doing the hood?
How much is in the reserve fund?
$200, something out of $1,000.
Does it, does it make sense to just go replace, replace new hood and make up air system and multi-zone system in the multi, or, multi-zone system serving the multipurpose room at $120,000? Can we, should we make the motion to just?
Do it.
Go and do it, and it's $120,000, not to exceed $120,000, and we can start planning and actually be ahead of it?
We'd have to have John design it?
Yeah.
So, we could just roll it in?
You can have that tomorrow, right?
Where's probably cost savings of doing it all at once? As opposed to, let's spend 60 now and 60 in three months.
And let's go on that. Renee, is he currently designing this end right now for us? And what was, was that, what was the price on that? Do we remember the rough estimate on that?
Cost or his?
His estimate. We haven't, I know we haven't put it out yet.
I don't have?
Because that's gotta come out of the reserve fund as well.
But we do have $117,000 going into that reserve account this year.
Oh, it's not there yet?
And how will the reserve account be managed under the single board? Will each school have its own reserve?
Yeah, it's written in the Articles of Agreement that the money that has been raised for the individual districts, it is the intent and the requirement that that money remain as it was raised. So, the capital improvements fund we have, the KIP fund, will stay allocated specifically for Shatsbury.
But a group of people from outside of Shatsbury will vote on and dictate what we do with those funds?
When they do it.
Right.
So, we have $117,000 going in on top of the $200,000.
And they can change the Articles of Agreement. I wanna get it all done.
You're gonna do phase two and three this summer? Is that what you're planning, Tony? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanna get it all done.
Get it all done. Vote on it, get it done, and then?
Get John on doing that now, and get it over, and you go for bid?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I make a motion, we do that.
Do what?
Right. Please.
Do that. It's something I told you to do.
Then we get John to, to design the entire, finish, finish the system.
New hood, new makeup?
New hood, finish the?
New makeup and finish this wing.
Ventilation system in this wing.
So, you want the multi-zone, serving the multipurpose room, done at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, is that right?
As well as the hood?
As well as the hood.
And have him continue his work on this wing?
Right.
Right.
He's got it, that, yeah, that's coming. When is that coming? That, that should be next month, because we have that.
Renee said?
Yes.
Yeah, he wants, he wants to have it, so?
So, we can do it in Jan, yeah.
Do you think he could have this other stuff done too, at the same time?
I really can't speak for him. I'm not sure what his workload is, but I don't think it would be fair.
Yeah, I don't think you can do the other?
He's been doing, he's been all around this place.
Doesn't seem like this is?
We found things I never thought existed here.
The mul, just for clarity, the multipurpose room is?
The gym.
The gym cafeteria?
Gym. In the stage.
Yeah. Do we call it that, or is that?
No, not really.
Yeah, okay.
Gymatorium.
But he calls it the multi-room, because it's?
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria and the gym.
Yeah, yeah. 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 So, a lot of schools do call it that.
Okay, so?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Maybe we should, well, well, let's finish this and then I'll ask.
Okay.
Because we need to move it.
Yeah, we're, we, we, what do you, what was your motion?
The motion is to finish the, the multipurpose room, the hood, and then finish the proposal on the ventilation system, put it all together and present it.
So basically...
The design. The design, right.
Basically, you, you wanna work on the, everything out in that room?
Correct.
Okay, including the kitchen?
Correct.
Okay. For approximately a hundred and twenty savings up there. Of course, you're gonna be saving money if you're doing it all at once.
Well, yes, so those two, those two systems out there are an additional hundred and twenty to what he's already working for us in this wing right here.
Right.
Yep. Okay, so is, are you set with the motion, Richard?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion by Tony. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Now... My question, just because we were talking about the funds and whether they'd still be, you know, dedicated, we received a gift last, a year or so ago from the Robert Frost Museum for several thousand dollars, and I was just thinking about it the other day and wondering whether we had had a chance to use it for class trips or anything like that, but this might not, maybe isn't a question for you, Renee, but I don't, it's not on the treasurer's report, I'm wondering where it went.
It's, it's in the general fund, but in terms of our accounting, we have it set up in a separate fund, so it's in your general, but it's allocated, it's restricted, so we can't spend it unless the board approves.
That, is, is it going to be restricted, restricted after merger? It'll still be restricted even though it's in a general fund?
So we might wanna try and get that broken out so that the new board can see and know what, that it's there and be aware of it in the same way that the Kip Fund is broken out, do you think? Or is that not necessary?
The Kip Fund is identified separately because it's in a physical, it's physically separate.
Bank account, okay.
Yeah. We're gonna see similar things with our other districts as well, but they're set aside, so the reserve funds.
Okay, now the next thing is the CAT TV. You wanna speak to that, Dave, or, I don't know if anybody has heard, the funding for CAT TV?
So we were approached by Tim Scroggins, the chair of the select board, and he contacted, I guess, everybody on the board and asked whether we would be, whether the board would be willing to sign on to a letter that the select board has drafted to send to the FCC, Federal Communications, about pending rule changes that would have a dramatic impact on CAT TV and other similar organizations in Vermont and, I guess, in other states as well, basically putting them at risk of losing their primary funding source, which is through the cable, through Comcast here. And I don't have a copy of the letter, so I'm not sure if anybody else brought it or has an opinion about it. There seemed to be a general consensus that this was not a good thing, this proposal change, and that the people who can't get to these meetings, for example, but are dependent on CAT TV to see what's going on in their town and initial districts, might not be able to get that information going forward. So we, again, we were asked to sign on to a letter that the select board put together to that effect.
I have the, I have what Tim wrote to us.
Yep.
If you'd like me to...
Please, go ahead.
Uh, it says, "Dear Board Members, will you join me in opposing the FCC rule changes that imperil CAT TV? As requested below, I am submitting an FCC comment opposing the rule change. In short, my current rules, in short, by current rules, towns receive franchise fees from cable companies and require channels to set aside for CAT TV. Cable companies would rather not pay the franchise fees or give away anything. The issue is described below in this article," and then there's an article, "let me know if you would like me to add your name to the letter attached. Note, the drop dead date is twelve fourteen, which is tomorrow."
Yep.
I can read the attached letter if you'd like, or I can?
I've read it, so...
You read it.
Just if you wanna give support, you can put your name on a letter that they're gonna send in to the FCC, and tomorrow is the last day, I think, that you can send it, send something in.
I wouldn't, I would... Well, so...
So it just, just, I guess basically, he's just asking, do we want to, do we wanna support sending a letter to the FCC on CAT TV's behalf?
Does it carry more weight coming from the board of Chefs, of the Shatsbury Elementary School, or does it carry more weight with individual names?
Or you can do both?
In either case, I'm...
Do it both ways.
Willing to do both. I, I would like to have a unified message from the board. I think it goes, goes further.
Yes, I think, I think so, and I, and I also think individually after it too.
Yep.
So that's what it...
Yeah. So I make a motion that we, as a board, sign on to the letter as outlined by Tim Scroggins, lending our support for CAT TV and stations like it across the country.
Yep. Second. Second, okay. And also, yeah, and if you, individually, as a board and also individually as, as taxpayers, that's basically what I, I'd like to add that to it, so that we do it as the board as a whole and then individually as taxpayers too. You got anything to say about that?
Thank you.
So the only, the only question I would have there is how do we communicate this to, to Tim?
He may be watching right now, so...
That would be the easy way.
We can email him.
Email him when I get home.
Okay.
Because it's gotta be in for tomorrow, so he was, he had emailed me earlier today, so, probably everybody. Okay, so we have a mess, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Carrie.
Aye.
Jeff?
So just a few things. It is a crazy busy time of year right now at Shatsbury Elementary. We're finishing up our parent conferences this week. They've been going very well. It's a nice time of year, a little busy for our teachers, but it's a nice time of year because we see the parents all coming in throughout the, throughout the week, but those will be finishing up tomorrow. We also finished up our second session of after-school program. I wanna thank Kara Scary, she's a pair here, but she's also our after-school coordinator, and she's continually, every session is a little better, a little bigger, a little more. This year, this session, we had drama, we had STEM, we had Minecraft, we had some other arts and crafts, we had some outdoor activities for the kiddos. I think there was roughly